I believe it's 5:30, so we will call this meeting to order. First, we need to determine a quorum. Mr. Clark?
We do have a quorum. Five people are present, two are absent. I can't start counting the noses here.
All right, I believe that is correct. So, we will continue with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I believe the next step is that we need to approve the agenda. So, I believe I need a motion for such.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So, the agenda is approved. Item three, recognitions, awards, and presentations. My two copies of the agenda show nuns.
I think we're good.
All right. We have none of those today. Brings us to section four, community comment. Three-minute limit per speaker and fifteen-minute limit per topic. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on any issue? No one jumping to the fore. I believe we can move on to item five, the consent agenda. And no one had indicated to me any issues with that. I believe that we, a board member can identify any item that they would like to consider separately. Otherwise, we approve this.
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask that we act individually on Lori Cadet and Colleen Merzenborn's request, so we can act on an individual retirement.
All right. I would second that motion if it were required. Any other items that any board member would like to identify? All right, with then, with the exception of the proposed retirements of Lori Cadet and Colleen Merzenborn, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
It's a roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, thank you. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Chair.
Tom.
Aye.
Miss.
Nobody really needed a motion yet, did we, Tom?
I didn't need a motion.
Motion.
Oh. I'm an amateur, please forgive me.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote.
Okay, Tom, you voted aye.
I voted aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes five-zero.
All right. All right, well, then, that brings us to the items of the requested retirements of Ms. Lori Cadet.
Mr. Chair, I would like to take time to acknowledge Lori Cadet for her dedicated service to the Fairboh Public Schools for twenty years as the health coordinator. I know that she has been very instrumental in taking look at making sure that our staff and more importantly, our students remain healthy during that period of time. They probably heard claim to fame as her right-to-know presentations at the gathering of all staff. I think that it's one of the most interesting ways of having been presented as to the right-to-know, which is such a dynamic topic anyway. And Lori has certainly brought a sense of humor, but yeah, the sense of seriousness to it. So, I'd like to personally acknowledge my appreciation for Lori and her dedication to Fairboh Public Schools and the twenty years that she's been here.
No one has done bloodborne pathogens better.
Yeah.
All right, well, also, on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank Lori for her service to this district and particularly service to the students. I believe we need a motion then to accept her.
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right. All the, this is just a voice vote.
Yep.
Yes, okay, thank you. All those in favor of accepting retirement of Ms. Lori Cadet, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Right? And the second letter was from Ms. Merzenborn.
Yes, eight years, I'm sure to her, it seems like a lifetime. The trials and tribulations that she's gone through, but I do know that others will have much to say about her leadership in the area of finances for the school district. I think we have been blessed to have somebody of her caliber leading that department and making us very accountable when it comes to finances in the school district. I believe that when you first came here, Colleen, we were knocking on the door of statutory operating debt, if not in the door, and we are now at a point of having a very healthy fund balance and very accountable to the community for the finances and the good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So, I for one sincerely appreciate all you've done for this district, Colleen. I know that we still have you here until August 31st, so plenty of time to change your mind. Any other board members may very well have some other things to say, but thank you very much, Colleen, for all you've done for this district.
I'd like to add my voice of thanks, Colleen, for all you have done. I was retiring from my position in the district at the time you came in, and we were in a dark place at that time, and we are in a much better place than now, and that's due to your efforts as well as many others, but your professionalism and competence have not been matched in my experience, so thank you very much for all you have done.
Colleen, I'd just like to tell you thanks. We worked hard together with a, with a large group getting the lobby pass. It took us two years, but that was the first increase in, I believe, eighteen years, and you helped a lot with that, and our kids are getting a better education. We're able to add a fair amount of programs, so the kids are exposed to that this year. The iPads, the technology, things of that nature, so thank you, you'll be missed. Like we talked about before, September 1st, you get to volunteer now, so.
Finance committee.
So, thank.
I'd like that. All right, I believe I need a motion.
Just one additional comment, as I've worked with a number of finance directors over the course of my career, and I would put Colleen at the top of that list. As to, you're right, Chad, our kids are better off and our school system is much better off, so with that and with mixed emotions, I'll entertain a motion to approve her retirement.
All right, motion? I'll second. All right, all those in favor of allowing Ms. Merzenborn to retire, please say aye. Reluctantly. All those opposed, same sign.
I can't vote.
August 31st. All right. Then I believe that brings us to item six, a report from the curriculum committee.
Good evening. Our last curriculum advisory committee meeting was on January 11th, and Brian Coleman, our service learning coordinator, came and presented just to give us an update on all the things that are happening, happening with our service learning. It was really, really neat to see all these things that, that our kids are doing that connect with our businesses and our community as a whole. He talked about the Lincoln Pride group going out to Heritage House and reading with the residents there. He talked about the business expo that they're preparing for, and one of my favorites, he showed a video of a yard of a resident of Fairboh in which our, a few of our ALC kids went and helped to clean up. When, when you get the opportunity to see this, you'll be very surprised. The yard was filled in the back with pretty much bushes and just overgrown, and the ALC kids went out there and a hundred percent helped this resident. And she actually created a video, kind of an emotional video that thanked the kids and really showed a connection between, you know, our, our students and, and the community as a whole. So, we're really excited about the things that Brian is doing, and at one point, I'd like the board to see that. The second thing that we talked about is the business or the budget request processes for new programs. We have a new process, and Todd presented that about the steps that you have to take. I know that in each building, the staff has been presented this through the principals. It talks about if they have an idea to make the proposal on a, on a form. Luckily, that Colleen helped us create, and then the process goes through the principals and then, and then on up the ladder. And so, that process is something that we implemented just basically, probably a month ago, and so it'll be neat to see how that, that flows this year. And the other thing that happened at the curriculum advisory meeting is a technology update, and I know Maria's gonna follow me up here, so she's gonna talk about the cases, and she's gonna talk about the MDM system, and after we had the update from technology, we ended the meeting. Do you want to add anything? Tom was there, Jason was there. Anything you want to add that happened at the curriculum advisory meeting?
I'm afraid I was not there, I am.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry.
You were on the application side.
Oh, that's, sorry about that. I guess Jason was there, so it was a, it was a very good meeting, and I think I'm gonna follow up with Maria.
Good evening. I've got some good news to share to start off with. We received information about our E-rate funding for category two, and we were approved in December for a category two funding, and that was the equipment that we installed this summer for access points and cabling and so forth. We were approved at eighty percent of our costs, and just to give you some numbers, the initial bit of the project was three sixty-six, seven oh four, and our eligible costs for reimbursement came to two eighty-three, three ninety-two, and sixty-four cents. So, we had quite, that was really good news. If you remember, we borrowed a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the general fund, and that will go back to the general fund, and the remaining will go to technology. Any questions on the E-rate?
Great job.
It took a while, but we went through. Wanted to share a little bit of some things that are happening in our district. We're really focusing on digital citizenship. Our integrationists have met with each grade level individually and did a twenty-minute presentation on digital citizenship, on safety, on social media responsibility, iPad care and, you know, iPad care and case care. Also, setting up notification limitations so they're not constantly interrupted by messages during class, so they're allowed to use notifications for Schoology and Gmail and school-approved apps. So, Chris, our integrationist, met with each grade level separately and did a presentation at their, at the school buildings. They did it for six through eight at the middle school and nine through eleven at the high school. Also, today, we launched what's called a DigiQuest for staff and students, and it's kind of a Schoology-based game where they can learn different aspects of just digital citizenship, and there's about twenty-three lessons that people can take. Some are easy, some are a little bit more involved, and then they earn badges for each lesson that they complete, and it's self-paced, so they can do it at their own, during their own time. And they're awarded prizes. We're gonna give out little prizes and awards at the end as they complete the process for digital citizenship. And again, it goes through some of the lessons through common sense media, cyber, cyber safety. Again, there's some social media information on there. Kids can set up their own Twitter accounts. They talk about copyright and some support tasks, things that, ways that they can help other students and other teachers. So, we're looking to get a hundred percent participation on that, so that's exciting. And then finally, we're also doing a digital citizenship week at our middle school, and that starts next week, and each core area will cover a different digital citizenship topic. So, the kids will experience different copy, topics throughout the whole week at the middle school, so that starts February 1st. Another thing we recently had is we had our first ed camp. We had an ed camp at our secondary schools on November 25th, and then another one on January 18th at our elementary schools. And an ed camp is like a form of professional development where teachers, they can choose the session that they want to attend, and then they would, they just get together and they talk and they converse and they share and they explore and they make mistakes and they try again, so it's just a great way to kind of see what other people are doing in, in their classrooms and share what they're, what they're doing with technology and the iPads. We had sessions on Schoology, we had sessions on specific apps, we had app exploration sessions, so it was really well. I think the staff really enjoyed doing that. As Colleen mentioned, we're in the middle of doing what's called an MDM review. That's our mobile device management system review. It's, it's the software that we use to control the iPads, and right now, we have a free system that has worked really well for us, but now we need to look at some additional features of a paid system. So, we're looking at a couple of different vendors right now. With the paid system, we'll be able to do a little bit more like control the App Store, control social media apps. Some of the systems have a classroom management tool where the teachers can actually control the devices for the students and lock them in a specific app or a specific, specific website. We're able to, from a IT standpoint, do a little bit more as far as pushing out updates and pushing out apps based on course levels. So, we're kind of researching that. We're talking with the curriculum committee and kind of just exploring our options for the MDM. I am presenting at the school board work session on February 8th, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on some of the features of the MDM. And the last thing I have is iPad repairs. We, there was a recent article in the paper about our repairs, and we're still at about under ten percent where we originally planned, but it's still, the repairs have been a little higher than what we wanted it to be. So, this week on Friday, we actually switched out the cases for the sixth graders at the middle school, and we, we gave them these Griffin survivor cases, and they have a hard shell cover on the front as well as reinforced corners, so we're hoping that this minimizes the damages a little bit that we're experiencing with the iPads and kind of keep costs down. Any questions?
Colleen, so, Maria, I'm sorry. Was that just for sixth graders? And the only reason I ask is because I have a sixth grade daughter and a seventh grade daughter, and my sixth grade daughter brought it home, and my seventh grader daughter didn't, so is that just sixth graders that got those?
Um, right now, I'm looking at my budget to see if I can purchase for seventh grade also, and we know it's something we want to do for the new incoming sixth graders next year, so we just started off with the sixth graders just to, to get some of them out there, and then we're looking at expanding it a little bit more, seeing how it goes with the sixth graders.
Is the sixth grade class the highest repair class type of thing, I mean?
It's pretty even. I can't pick one grade level or the other, it's pretty even across the middle school. The middle school's a little bit more than the high school right now, but we just started with the sixth graders, knowing that they're gonna be in seventh grade next year, and have them for a couple of years, kind of a test.
And so, you bought about three hundred or so, or?
Yeah, three hundred of them.
And does that come out of your technology budget, or is?
Right now, it came out of the, the repair fund.
Okay.
We're, we're just using that fund to cover the cases. We're hoping that it would, the cost of the case was three, thirty-three dollars, and the cost of the repair is significantly higher, so we're hoping that this will save costs a little bit.
So, when you say the repair fund, that's kind of the, is that the same as the self-insurance fund?
Yeah, that's the self-insurance.
Yeah, okay. And, and do you think that twenty dollars, I think is what was charged this year, right? Is that adequate, or do we need to?
We did ten, fifteen, and twenty, and I don't know, we might have to look at, at just raising those fees just a little bit next year. When I compare it to other districts, like I compared it to, I looked up other districts today, like Medford and Farmington and Northfield, and we are the lowest right now, so.
I, I would guess a lot of them are in that forty to fifty dollar range, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, between twenty-five and forty dollars.
What's the most common repair, just the screen cracked, or what?
Crack screen. Those have been the most common damages with crashes.
What about stolen or?
Um, we've had about.
Misplaced, lost?
We, we had a few lost ones. We've had a few stolen ones too. I'd say about seven of them were stolen. They were left in a locker room, and kids came back and they were gone, so.
Now, they're useless to anybody.
Right, they're, they're useless.
They're just, they don't know that, that they're.
They're useless, yeah.
Can't use them for every day. They're all locked out, but you lock them out, or what, or send a signal out, or what?
We do send a notice that, that comes across the screen that says if found, please contact our district, but other than that, there's nothing they can do. They can try to reset it, but it won't work.
Chances are, they probably just threw it away then. You steal something, they can't use it, they throw it away?
Yeah, they don't.
They can't.
They just, they, some people think they can, you know, plug it into their computer and reformat it. We don't allow that with our devices, so.
Is a ten percent damage stolen, is that normal? To me, that seems to be high, but.
That's pretty normal across most districts, yeah.
Okay. Does that go down over time, or not? We get what, fresh sixth graders coming up, then?
Um, I think if you talk to some districts, they, the kids get a little bit, they get used to the device and they, you know. Right now, it's still fairly new, you know, we haven't even gone through the whole year yet.
Okay.
We're just trying a different case just to see if that minimizes the damages a little bit.
When we went to visit at Farmington, Colleen and, and Maria and I, we visited with their superintendent tech director and curriculum person, they said that they experienced similar things that we're experiencing our first year, then it had, that trend had gone down over a period of time.
Maria, I appreciate what you were reporting on, on promoting digital citizenship. There's an issue that I guess is connected with digital citizenship, but it's maybe just citizenship, and at some point in the future, I'd like to hear if we're doing anything in regards to plagiarism. When computers were growing in use at the schools, there was an issue of, you know, copy and paste, and I don't know if we're doing anything, if what can be done, or, you know, we talked about several item possibilities way back in the stone ages when I was working there, but if there is anything that's been done, being done, or could be done, that would be an issue that I'd like to hear about at some point. I'm not asking you to report on it now, although it looks, Colleen is.
Well, I can actually answer that right away, in the fact that there is an app in which you can, some of our teachers are using where you just scan a little piece of the paper in, and then it can identify whether or not it's been plagiarized.
Oh, excellent.
So, it's kind of, our English department is using it. I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure who else is using it, but we had that discussion, I don't know, a couple of months ago, actually. So, they, they are using the tool when, when they think they need it.
Well, ten, ten years ago, that technology was available, but it was pretty expensive, and we tried just Google searches at that time, quote a couple of lines from the thing, and sometimes the article would pop up.
And I'm not sure how accurate it is, I just know that it's something that they, they have a fight around it.
Well, I think the fact that we have it and students know that we have it, I think, is a giant step. We need to hold them accountable for the honesty of their work. All right. Thank you both. That brings us to item seven, policy committee. No report.
This is our second reading, so.
Okay.
These policies, and we're ready to approve them.
All right, so we have policy, we did these as a group unless there was someone who wanted to identify one, if my memory serves. So, we have policy 205, open meetings and closed meetings. Policy 206, public participation in school board meetings and complaints about persons at school board meetings and data privacy considerations. Definitely a governmental title. Policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies, and policy 524, technology acceptable use policy. All here for the second reading. I believe it would be, if anyone has questions or objections, we've seen these policies once before, and we need to take action to approve those.
So moved on all the policies.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. This does not have to be a vote, okay, well, a voice vote. All those in favor of approving policies 205, 206, 208, and 524, as previously stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Five, zero, I believe. All right. Next step is rescission of the same policies that we just replaced, 205, 206, 208, and 524, and I think I can dispense with reading the titles again. So, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved to rescind those policies.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of rescinding those policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Done. All right, that brings us to item seven, the finance committee. And do we have?
Yes, I gotta report you back.
All right.
Unless Chad wants to do it.
No, go ahead.
You can.
You're good.
Okay. Chad was part of this too, but not much going on, it was a very short meeting. A lot of the items in the agenda we'll be voting on, but nothing really to emphasize. We'll be talking about the construction, about change orders, really nothing happening there, and we're keeping track of the budget additions very closely, so we don't go over budget on that, so that's really being monitored greatly. So, other than that, it's not much to record at this time.
All right.
Next meeting is February 8th.
February 8th, 7:30 a.m. at the district office.
District office, yep.
All right. That would bring us to B1, Bush Foundation Grant Memorandum of Understanding. Mr. Sesker, or who should speak to that just?
Yeah, I can speak to this. Heidi wrote a grant, Heidi Onis, you see on there, for our support, and I'm sure Colleen helped out with this piece too, regarding our Avid program. And a Bush Foundation is a large foundation that gives grants to various school districts, and not a lot of schools receive this grant. We don't know exactly how much it is yet, we'll let you know, but right now, we're, we're writing some dollar amounts for what we would use this money for. We just, as you remember, put the Avid program in our elementary schools, which has been terrific so far, and we can offset some of those costs actually with this Avid grant, so that was a very nice piece for us. And like I said, not a lot of schools are receiving this, Fairboh Avid is to be one of them.
So, am I understanding that the grant will help pay for things that we are already doing? Is there any additional programming or services that would come from this grant?
There'll be some, well, well, actually, we've been paying for those too. It'd be mainly the, a lot of it's the staff development piece, and a lot of that we are paying through our staff development piece, it could replace that, but I don't know how many folks we can hire through this. Is it gonna offset in teacher salaries?
Actually, if you look in the memorandum, it talks about some of the budget components, and it talks about that it'll help us pay for our membership fee, a resource library, the summer institution that we send staff to, Avid Weekly, Tutors, Path, which is professional development, and what they call LCR, which is a professional development in the leadership area.
Yep.
And, but we don't, like Todd said, we really don't know the final total yet. I understand that we'll be getting that relatively soon, but that is what we know that grant can pay for at this time.
Thank you.
If my memory serves correct, I thought yourself, or Heidi, said maybe there was only eleven district, school districts in the state that got it, and they were one of them.
This was a consortium effort, and we know Oatana and I think Austin, I think.
Yep, Austin got it, yep.
So, we got it together.
And a couple from North Dakota as well, yep. Some schools in North Dakota got it, yes.
It's, it is a, to get this grant is, is really an honor, so we're very excited about that.
Well, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Heidi and herself and all those involved. Well, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank Heidi and, and herself and all those involved. Um, heck of a way to run a business, but, uh, it's good when we are just so successful, so thank you. All right, then I believe this is an action item, so we need to approve this. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Bush Foundation Grant Memorandum of Understanding.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. All those, oh, any discussion? I may overdo that for a bit, but bear with me, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, um, item B two, Construction Finance Report.
Again, if you wanna take a look at it, it's a similar spreadsheet, um, that we've gone through before, if you want Cleaner and I to go through that with you, we'd be more than happy to.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing has changed, it's all the same, uh, information that you've seen in the past, Finance Committee has seen this as well.
So, as Mr. Olson indicated, the Finance Committee had looked at this issue and seems satisfied at this point.
Really uneventful.
And we're watching the, well, between the finance and the facilities, we're watching change order, orders coming in.
Understand, understand, thank you.
Very carefully.
Thank you very much. All right, that was a report, um, Budget additions since June twenty fifteen. Get to the right page here, nope.
Do you wanna go through the District Office expenses, are you okay with that one too? That one's the one right after the FEC.
Did I?
No, you, I, there's two in there, I didn't know if the, if you had the time to pop both those up or not. Underneath the number two, there is a, a F E C and D O expenses.
Oh, I see. Yeah, education, I'm sorry, I think I marked it off before we finished it.
Yep.
Um, the Education Center and District Office change orders, and you indicated there were?
There were, there were no change orders, no.
Okay.
Again, we're watching that between the finance and facility, we're watching.
Okay.
Closely.
And I'm looking at page sixty five of my notes here, and, uh, we, I believe that's the budget additions since June twenty fifteen.
We made one slight adjustment on, you saw this data.
We saw this earlier, yes.
Except for Fernbrook, we netted the aid and the expenses out for you, so you could see that, there's a more realistic number. So instead of, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand before, it's about seventy one thousand is the net, because we do receive revenue from that.
Okay.
Okay, so more of an update, again, as we get closer to the budget, you wanna look at these different pieces and make a decision in April, which one of those pieces you'd like to keep.
Okay, so the.
And we'll give you some suggestions as well.
Okay, so this, this list will reappear in, in the budget process?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, number four, B four, budget, no.
Number five.
Now, number five.
That's right.
Worn out my red pen, just for seat, um, Strategic Facilities Plan, a report, please.
This is, again, what we've seen before, um, if you'd like Cleaner and I to cover this, Kevin had to go home sick, he wasn't feeling very well. But basically, what we've done is we've, we've tried to make this a little bit easier for you to read. So rather than putting the operating capital, the deferred maintenance and the bond issue on three different sections, we put them in three columns. So as you read across, you can see where each of those different budgets are, each of those different revenues are. Um, Facility Committee is working on prioritizing and also coming up with some ideas if we ever wanna go to a bond issue. And listing those different ideas on this spreadsheet, okay? Nothing has really changed, I don't know, Clean, have we changed anything other than the columns? I think everything's pretty much the same as what we've had, uh, that you've already seen.
Oh, okay.
Um.
And then in, in addition to that, to the strategic plan that I don't have, I can't pop it up, for some reason, it's not downloaded, it's not downloaded.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's not, it's just me.
It's, yeah, it's a document that we've covered that specifies, yeah, thank you. It's a document that looks like this once you pull it up, but it specifies all the properties we own, the square footage, the, uh, number of custodians we have, the outsides where footage that we have acreage, things like that, everything that you can imagine for facilities is within here. And it also parallels to what we identified in our strategic plan and, oh, there it did pop up. Okay, so that's what that is, all right. It's a good document, Kevin, and mainly Kevin and Carrie and, and then Clean and Amri and I had our fingers in it a little bit too, Clean did a lot of work with it as well, so.
Now, is, is my memory correct that at some point, we're expecting a, I'm, I'm looking for the right, a finalized strategic plan, um, and is that, at what point would that be?
The strategic plan is ready to go right now, it's kind of for a review, and we haven't really approved it yet at a board meeting, so I think that would probably be our next step to approve it. So, we can bring that to the February board meeting after, I want the Facility Committee to take another look at it one more time before we bring it to the Board, but, uh, official approval would actually be nice to have.
But, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
N- no, please go ahead.
Um, but there's a lot of stuff on there, Todd, like in the, in the, in the near-term years that are pretty accurate. But there's a lot of stuff to the far right that's kinda like throwing stuff against the whiteboard and seeing what sticks type of thing, right, so?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing to approve way over to the right side of the, that document type of thing, I mean, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and I would say the strategic plan, not the spreadsheet, but the strategic plan would be what we, it'd be nice to have approval of. That would be a separate document from the spreadsheet. But there will be, right, short-term expenditures that we're gonna allocate right away, and then we're gonna have to discuss, and that's gonna change every year for some of our longer-term pieces.
So when you're saying strategic plan, I mean, there's, there's one on here that's for the year fifteen sixteen, and there's one on here for the out-years of seventeen through twenty one.
Yeah.
What, what are we looking to bring to the Board?
The Strategic Facilities Plan for fiscal year fifteen sixteen, and then we can review that and then just update it every single year. So next year, we go sixteen, seventeen with the same plan, as long as it parallels me.
But if we ever need to do an addition or want a new facility or something, obviously, and, and there's a bond associated with that, that all has to be
Yep.
planned and reviewed far in advance, okay?
This is really something that the Board's been asking for, for a long time, and we're just getting it in there, and I, I think it's, it'd be great if we got some sort of approval to have it into our documentation, and then, and then keep up with it every single year.
I still think there's one typo in the fifteen sixteen plan, the high school has two baseball fields and one softball field. We have it still listed as three baseball fields, just a minor.
I'll write that down.
So if I, if I'm understanding what you said, Mr. Sisker, that, um, we can be looking at the, the fifteen sixteen information, the, the background information that precedes that, and looking to approve that at some, uh, perhaps as early as February?
Yeah, the Strategic Facilities Plan, it'd be nice to be approved by February. It's prob- it's pretty much ready to go now, but I think let's wait another month, give the Facility Committee one more time to look at it and then approve it in February.
Right, and, and so I'm saying I, I can expect to have about a month to, again, go through
Yep.
that textual stuff and so on, and then the, the spreadsheet will be a year to year.
Yeah, that'll change all the time, yeah, that'll be a day.
Of course, of course.
Yeah.
All right. All right, um. I believe, if my check marks are anywhere close to right, um, we're on B six, the Finance Committee's schedule to, as it was revised. And oops. I'm not sure paperless is easier for me. There it is. All right, um, and Finance Committee members, you're all comfortable with this? And this will be published on the website for, I don't think my reading the dates has any advantage at this point. Um, and that's just a report anyway. All right, that brings us to eight C, an Enrollment Report for January.
Again, if you take a look at it, we've gone up a little bit, that's a good direction to go with our students, and, um, we're still pretty close to what we projected in June.
Yeah, absolutely, eight students, by my count, so that's
We did a good job with that.
Outstanding, yes. I've seen it be wildly different than that. Okay, that's a report, do we have a financial, financial reports, anything to, any items that Board members or administration would like to make note of?
Well, maybe just, uh, what I'd like to do for the new Board members, if you're looking at this Finance Report, um, and for the other Board members too, um, Andy does this report for us, and she does a really good job with it, but I always look at revenue and expenditures. And then I like to, on the month, for example, for the month of December two thousand fifteen, you see where the revenues are on that first report and then the expenditures. I always like to make sure revenues are above expenditures, that's always a good thing. And you should ask us, and we do this at the Finance Committee, at the Board level, if you see something like that and you're curious about why did the expenditures exceed the revenues, then we can go back and explain it to you, okay? So that's how I look at it, if you look at the revenues and expenditures, you wanna make sure that the revenues are ahead. Now, remember the one thing, if you look at through December two thousand fifteen, our expenditures are way more than the revenues. So you would say Superintendent or Finance Director, why don't we have those revenues in yet? And that explanation really can be given by the levy, the, we don't see our levy dollars until probably April or May, May, I think, is our first cut. So a lot of those dollars will come in in May, and then the state meter is the state aid system, and a lot of those revenues will come in later too. So they're gonna be there, we just haven't seen them yet, okay?
But Todd, our budget does call for forty-eight million eight hundred nineteen thousand of revenue.
Yep.
And our budget does call for fifty-one million four hundred seventy thousand of expenditures.
Yeah, and that's another good piece to look at too.
Total, that, that, so back to your point, we, we did approve that? June, June, Mayish, something like that.
Yeah, so don't be afraid to ask questions about the, the revenue expenditure piece, okay?
All right.
And that would go for the other funds that are in there as well.
Okay, and, um, that doesn't require an action, but item C three does. Resolution sixteen dash eleven, acceptance of gifts or donations, but as I recall, our conversation, Todd, there were not?
Uh, actually, we did get some, we did get some, yeah, some, yep, we do have some.
Oh, all right. Okay, um. Here we are, thank you. All right, the, on behalf of the, uh, the Board of Education, we'd like to thank, uh, the Reliance Bank for forty-five dollars in sponsorship of Students of the Month Program at Faribault High School. Uh, Mr. Tim Salaba, uh, donations of a used trombone with case with a value of three hundred dollars to the Faribault Middle School Band Program. And also Sedexo Incorporated and Affiliates, two thousand five hundred dollar donation towards Faribault High School High Top Tables. So, some work being done in the cafeteria, it sounds like. Again, we thank all community members and organizations that, uh, are contributing to the, uh, the benefit of our students. So I believe I need a motion to accept these gifts and donations.
So move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Sorry?
Okay.
Mr. Clark, would you read the roll?
Yes, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes five zero.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to item nine, Insurance Committee, no report, Wellness Committee, Amri, do you?
Good evening, uh, just a couple of things out of wellness, the last meeting we had, we reviewed the pandemic plan. Um, uh, Richard is very interested in that, so there will be a few more edits, and then it should move on to the Policy Committee. So let me know if you'd like me to forward that to you, so you can see where we're at with that.
Sure, could you please?
Would you like, yeah, yep, absolutely. Um, the other piece of what we discussed in our meeting was just continuing ways to brainstorm student wellness and how to engage, um, in possible ways of maybe creating something called hashtag Beautiful Falcons or something in terms of maybe some interviews that would happen at the middle school, um, just about self-image and, and just promoting wellness in that way. So we're continuing discussions with that. And then this month, uh, we are focused on giving, so we're giving the, uh, staff some magazines, all focused on wellness. Those will be in their, uh, staff rooms for them to look at, so healthy recipes, healthy minds, all that good stuff, so that's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
And I see your name attached to the next one, the Community Education one.
Yes, okay, so responding to our strategic plan, um, one of the directions we were given from our council was bringing services out to neighborhoods, so we've certainly done that this year, um, we are now currently located at, uh, Hewlett, that neighborhood of Evergreen Estates and at the Faribault Diversity Coalition, so some of the things we're doing is we've expanded homework help to the Hewlett neighborhood. We're offering adult ESL, um, English as a second language at Hewlett Evergreen and the Faribault Diversity Coalition. We have family, family literacy programming at Evergreen and ECFE at Hewlett, so we're really trying to bring programming to the neighborhoods, so. We couldn't just start with one thing, we had to do several things, so happy to do that, um, and, you know, some participation. It's, it's slower in the beginning, but it will pick up as we go, so we already have some students and families attending. And then just the other thing about community ed is, and I'm sure, um, Todd will also talk about this, but the Martin Luther King Breakfast that happened in the community at the coffee shop, um, on the eighteenth, so that was a success. Had about forty people there, the Faribault Diversity Coalition sponsored it, um, some poems were created by some high school students, uh, they received awards, three people received awards. It was just a really nice event, so very nice community event. I'm a member of the FDC Board, so I was there in that capacity, but also with my school hat on, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, item D says Facility Committee, no report. Uh, item E, Special Services, Mr. Tanner.
Hi, um, back in November, uh, I talked with the Board a little bit about our special education child count and reviewed the child count from two thousand and fourteen. December has passed, and in January, the Department of Education updated our child count for two thousand and fifteen, and our child count currently is six hundred and sixty-four special education students, that's an increase of twenty-three students over last year. I included in the, in the Board packet, a graph, a visualization of that, so you could see which areas, um, we increased and by how much. Um, overall, we've seen a decrease in speech and language and developmental disabilities, those are, um, the developmental disabilities are kids in our early childhood program. But we've seen an increase in learning disabilities, um, emotional behavior disorders, other health disabilities and autism. So overall, I, I wanna say business is good in the world of special education, um, we're increasing our child count. And that's, 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 it's a positive thing. Next, I wanted to mention that tomorrow, the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative will hold their first official board meeting where the, the new Board that, um, we elected, um, represented by Northfield and Faribault, will get together and talk about a number of different issues related to the, to the co-op, including appointing a Director of Special Services, because our Director of Special Education for that program, um, determining which district will be the fiscal host for that program, as well as how to, how to separate some of the equipment that Faribault has purchased versus purchase equipment that both Northfield and Faribault has purchased. We're going to hold Board meetings on the fourth, fourth Tuesday of each month at, um, the District Office in Faribault, so typically, they'll be at four thirty on the fourth Tuesday. Tomorrow is the fourth Tuesday. And lastly, um, STEP, which is our transition program at the Krec Building, is going to be holding their open house on February eleventh, where they'll showcase some of the is going to be holding their open house on February eleventh where they'll showcase some of the job sites that they visit. That's our, STEP is our transition program for eighteen to twenty-one year olds. They'll showcase some of the job sites that they've been working at and some of the crafts that they do and some of their, I'm told, some of their cooking skills as well. So they'll have treats that they've made. So that is on February eleventh from three thirty to six thirty P M. at the Krec Building in Faribault. Any questions about any of those things?
Is Tim involved with that cooking or?
No, it's a program run by the special education teachers and life skills. It's not affiliated with the school lunch program. So the kids, the student, they're not kids anymore, they're eighteen to twenty-one, but they learn how to do life skills. And so a life skill is being independently able to cook for yourself. So they'll plan menus, go shopping, bring back the foods and prepare them in a safe and healthy way.
Then what's the status of the SUN program?
The SUN program is a piece of the, it's going to be a piece of the cooperative. The three classrooms that are a part of the SUN program will move to a site in Northfield. So they're going to be housed at a location in Northfield and they're actually going to add another classroom because their location, they're going to be absorbing some more students from a school in Northfield that's closing. So the status is that we're moving along and moving forward with that. But that's, that's one of the splits as far as locations. The SUN program is going to be housed in Northfield. The behavior programs, which are focused in the therapeutic program called Reflections, and the transition program are going to continue to be at the Cannon, at the Krec site. Although we are going to change the name from Krec, which is going to be very difficult. Just because I'm used to saying Krec and it's going to be hard to.
What's a new name?
We haven't decided yet. And I don't know that we'll decide that at our board meeting tomorrow. I think there's a lot of other things on the agenda, but as soon as we figure it out.
What's wrong with the old name?
They wanted to rebrand. The board feels that rebranding is good because there's two locations. They wanted to incorporate some name, a name for the SUN program and create a new name for the SUN program because it's going to be at a new location. And then they thought within the community, it might be good to rebrand it so that people know that it's a new district and so they kind of have a new feel for it. So that's the reasoning and it's just, it's publicity and just trying to shed the old and move forward and look forward to better days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item ten, the compulsory instruction compliance data report, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. And that, if I recall, was the, some of the homeschooling information?
Yeah, it just has a list of the kids in the district and where they are located.
Okay.
Just the thing that we have to report every year.
We don't have to act upon that. Is, just as a point of interest, has this changed much over the last year or two? To anyone's knowledge, I don't, probably should have thought to warn you about that question.
We can look and see, but I think it's been pretty steady. Yeah.
Okay. I would be interested in hearing at some future point about how, if there is any kind of trend or if it's just basically a fairly stable situation.
We'll take a look.
All right. My goodness. I don't believe I can set the record for running the first meeting now.
We still have a closed session.
Sure. All right, other items of information, our student representative, Ms. Kuzla.
Hello.
How are things going?
We just started our new semester last week with finals and it's going well so far. We also have a new face at the high school, our new ID, Mr. Duchesne. We're very excited for him. Our winter activities are improving and getting better every day. The hockey teams have just a few games left before they head into playoffs where dance, basketball, wrestling, and voice singing still have over a month till they start playoffs. Student Council is planning events like a winter pep fest where each sports captain will speak and play some fun games, get them involved to the student body so they all know who our winter captains are. We're also planning events for Valentine's Day. We do like little crush cans you can buy for fundraisers or matchmakers. And we're also planning our spring blood drive. And our next meeting is this Wednesday and Mr. Sesker and Mr. Duchesne will be attending that. We're excited for them to come. Another big event we have coming up this spring is prom. And prom committee just started working here as the new semester begun. And we recently sent out votes through iPads to pick what theme we're going to have in the gym and it was Frayn the Moment was our winner. We just found that out today, so we're very excited about that. Any questions?
Thanks. Jenna does it a lot. It's fun to see Jenna here at the meeting too, so that's good. And Hannah's busy too, I know, but you guys are both very, very busy.
And your games this week are when? In where?
Girls' basketball is home on Tuesday and boys will be away. And then Saturday, girls are away and boys will be home.
They're fun to watch. So if you get a chance to go watch them play, they're fun to watch.
Seven thirty tomorrow night.
Yep.
Well, thank you for that. And I'd like to throw in, I know my predecessor may have already done this, but one of the things that I've been amazed with over the years is the Toys for Tots drive. And I want to thank the students and all those that participated in that. It's been outstanding thing. And I know that's a little bit of old news, but this is my first night, so.
Yeah, we recently, no, this is the first year we've made it to our ten thousand dollar goal in the past like three or four years, so that was really exciting for us. We had a big pep fest and teachers had incentives like waxing their legs or dyeing their hair and.
Did I see somebody taped to a wall?
Oh, yes, massage. I almost taped to a wall. That was an incentive too. It gets the kids involved and it's a lot of fun.
All right, well, thank you again. School board members. Any announcements, news?
MSBA.
Oh, MSBA, I was to the conference and who else? You were there, Jerry was there.
Vette.
Yvette was there, so we were there for the luncheon for the award to Jason as All-State School Board. And then I walked around in the display area and picked up some good literature.
Yep.
And I'll be passing it out. What, any status on that financial stuff that I passed on to you?
Yeah, we did. We'll give you an update on that. Cleen and I will talk about that a little bit. That's with the Northland piece.
Was it worth anything or?
Not yet.
It's, we're getting close, yep.
Oh, okay.
But there is, there will be some savings.
Because it's, they added, they, well, of course, they were, say it was time sensitive.
Yep.
Could save the district seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're aware of it, but it's not quite up for us.
Not up, not, okay.
Those could.
Oh, two years? For some reason, they said it was time sensitive.
Yeah, we looked at it.
I don't know why.
Two is closer than three.
Okay, that's good to know.
That's true. I never thought of that.
Yeah, so it's a very good conference.
And we also went to that Early Bird session. That was pretty scary.
Oh, that's, that's on computer hacking.
Yep.
And my suggestion would be, I mean, we should take a vote and shut down the internet. Because that's really, that's what people can do and for a small fee, they can, there's people out there can destroy your life.
It's crazy and they don't live in our country.
No, there's one that's, what was his name? Begins with R.
I can't remember the name of it.
But it's, he's twenty-three years old and he's stealing so much money, he can't count it all. He's hacking into all these corporations. I think there's, what do you, sixteen thousand corporations he hacked into.
I think he's a general of the Soviet Union Army is what it was.
No, that was another one.
Okay, one of them has that.
Oh, he got caught.
Yeah, but didn't get arrested. It's crazy.
Probably mean premier of Russia. But yeah, that was very scary about internet and everything that they can wipe you out.
Yep, including school districts.
Yes.
For security reasons.
They've never, no one hacked into school districts yet?
No.
To transfer money out of the funds. I don't know. Is that possible?
They really emphasize password, password, password. Make sure you have a password protected, all the different things, from our smart finance to everything. Needs to have password protection.
So that's something that.
The bank accounts aren't big enough.
Yeah.
They go up to the major corporations.
Yeah, yeah, that's what.
That's true.
Other than that, what else did I miss there with that conference?
The leadership, the guy that talked about leadership, beard. He was at the, our opening speaker.
Yep.
Yeah, it was great.
Of course, it was all work and no play.
Yeah. It was a good conference.
I'll just chime in, this past weekend at the high school, the Faribault Girls Basketball Association hosted a youth tournament, third grade through eighth grade, had forty-eight teams. I would guess Jenna volunteered at it, but I would guess there were upwards of fifteen hundred people there over two days. So it was a big event. The parking lot was jam packed. So it was a great event and good for youth girls to be out there playing and exercising and whatnot, bringing a lot of people into town. And I would say that on April twenty-first is when the dedication to Ted Nelson for the track that the board has approved. The Booster Club has looked at some preliminary drawings and we do have it passed. Todd and Kevin have seen confirmation of it, that the city will allow us to redo the ticket entrance. And the Booster Club is looking at spending somewhere twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars between now and then redoing the ticket entrance to Bruce Smith Field, Ted Nelson Track. So when we get there, you folks will all be invited and whatnot. So hopefully it'll be a nice addition.
Very impressive.
Well, I had a chance to go to the middle school band concert. I was always impressed with what they can do. Went to Jefferson Fifth Grade Program. It's always cute to see those kids doing their thing. Yvette was there, that's her school, so she came and supported. Congratulations to the Emeralds JV Dance Team for going undefeated in all of their competitions this year. They are done, although the Emeralds, I think, still have some time left.
Yep, they have sections on it. They're working.
Okay, yep, I thought that was coming up, but pretty cool for JV. I don't know. I like that, I think.
Well, if there's no one else, I'd like to speak up just a bit. I spoke at the last meeting about trying to change a metaphor that had been common in our discussions over the last few years. And to change it from what was a fine metaphor, the ship in the harbor and getting it out to sea and going, but we are going places, no doubt. But I would like to promote the idea of a garden as our metaphor in that we develop our young people, giving them the opportunity to grow and prosper in a variety of ways in a variety of areas. So I'd like to, I'm looking at what the garden might look like next year. Now, we have our budgeting process coming up later in the spring, but I would like to ask that board members come to our February work session with any notions that they have about changes in the garden. So to help you along that line, I brought you a gardening catalog. I highly recommend this, this organization, a local, local business. And we have a variety of high-quality local businesses that can help us with this. But what we've grown in the past has served us pretty well. But maybe there's something else we need to do, something else we can do differently, maybe some new soil supplement or something. I don't know. But I'd like to promote that and I'd like to encourage us to have that kind of discussion looking forward to next fall, starting at the work session in February, on February eighth. So enjoy your catalog and think about what we should be planting and nurturing this spring and be ready to harvest at the beginning of next school year.
Can I mention organic or?
I'm highly, I'm in favor of organic, but other people have other ideas and I'm not. I mean, you know, you can grow your own garden your way, but together, we've got the garden of District six fifty-six. All right, Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, like you guys, it's been very busy this January. We went to Farmington to visit with the superintendent, the curriculum director and the, and the technology director there. And it was a great, it was a nice visit. It was a nice tour that they gave us. We really went there to ask about how we could, how they're managing their substitutes because as you know, we have a substitute shortage. And we've got some pretty good ideas of what we can take a look at and we might experiment with a few teachers this year to test that water. We also talked about snow days and how they handle snow days. They don't have any snow days in their contract, so it works a little bit better for them actually to do the snow days. With us, I think we have, we have two days, two or three days, two days in our contract for snow days. So that's kind of a negotiations piece with the teaching staff. And then the other conversations led to some of the experiences they had with their one-to-one initiatives and where they were with their plan. We learned we're really not too far behind a lot of schools. In fact, I would contend, even with the Big Nine Conference, we're actually moving ahead of a lot of the schools that we have with technology. So thanks to Marie and Cleen and all the work that they've done with that piece. As Cleen said, we, or Anne Marie said, we went, I went, I attended the Martin Luther King Breakfast at the coffee shop downtown. It was very well attended. We had people from the Buddhist temple up at Farmington and we had the mosque represented. And of course, we had our own Catholic priest representing different populations. And then we had Dr. Parker from South Central College do a presentation and did an excellent job with that. It was very nice and it was pretty impressive to see all the different cultures there together in one area. So very well attended. I was also at Hoops for Hope. It's a basketball game, but the results didn't turn out the greatest, but it was fun evening with the Boys and the Girls Basketball game. It was a cancer fundraiser and very well organized. I think the Boosters did a lot of that organization and did a good job.
Girls and Boys Basketball Association.
Girls and Boys, thank you. Girls and Boys Basketball Association organized it and got T-shirts out. So it was a great fundraiser. The one cool thing that, that you don't, you like to spread as much sportsmanship as you possibly can in athletics. And we do a pretty good job of that, but I thought it was really cool when both bands played the National Anthem. They had the Northfield Pep Band there and the Faribault Pep Band and together they played the National Anthem. So it was pretty cool to see that. Let's see, we, I was at the MSBA conference and saw some great presentations. The very end, Tom should have been at that last presentation. It was pretty interesting to see the trends of future jobs that are out there and how very little correlation, some of the testing and the standards, and sorry, Cleen, some of the things that we've been doing translate to future jobs and how much the other fine arts and engineering and designing and some of those other jobs that are out there that are beginning to explode. The, I was also at, well, I've had a number of meetings with staff now talking about the boundary changes and what that is implying and how that shift is happening. We've been really studying the numbers. We really worked hard at it last week. We spent a lot of time making sure the numbers were correct and double checking. We met for three hours on Tuesday night. I was at that meeting and Anne Marie was at that meeting doing some more checking with those based on some of the feedback we've been getting from staff. I think we've done a pretty good job of vetting that and hopefully those numbers will be clean tomorrow. And we'll get those out to the board so they can see them. We've actually been able to close that disparity even more. I would say it's a hybrid of both Scenario one and Scenario two. We'll be presenting that February workshop to the board so they can take a look at it. It does involve moving more families. We don't know how transportation's going to be impacted yet. We'll take a look at that too, once we get those numbers nailed down. But it actually is, is looking, I think, very, very good based on the guidelines that you guys gave us to begin with. So I think we're following those pretty carefully. Other, oh, I'm meeting with Four Seasons on Thursday with various folks, so we've got a group of people. I think I sent that to you too. If you, if you want to come, it's five thirty, Anne Marie? Five thirty on?
Five o'clock at Jefferson.
Five o'clock at Jefferson, so you're simply welcome to, if you want to pop in and see what's going on.
Is that in one of the gyms there?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be in the gym, the first gym that you come in. Yep, so. Other than that, like I said, it's been very busy. It's been fun though, getting to the athletic contest and trying to pop in and see some of the kids. That's all.
Todd, can I ask you a follow-up quick?
Sure.
When you met with Farmington, I think I read in the paper, they're one of the school districts where they've tried it at the high school with regards to substitutes where. where a teacher calls in sick or they're out, and at the high school level, they actually, at times, don't replace them for the day? Do they, do they, they go meet in a common area, or the kids take their iPads and go to a study session or something?
Yep.
Is that, and are they having good results with that?
They have very good results, yeah, and it's been very positive. A lot of the assignments at Schoology, because we've adopted that with the piece, has been their conduit between what they can do now, and the kids can do a lot of this independent study that they have. And they have, the comment that Jay Haug and the superintendent made to me was, the teaching's almost more effective than having a substitute in the classroom. So, the kids are in groups, are in the media center, they're doing whatever they can and studying it based on the assignments that they've been given by the staff persons. There's a supervisor that you would hire for that, but there's multiple grades or kids in it.
And did they have any statistics on how much that's saving them annually by using that model?
We have, I don't know if they, they just started this year, so I don't know if they have enough data to see it. It, I know, I know it's saving money, but I don't know how much it's going to be. More, more so, I think, it's, it's saving the headache of trying to find somebody to come in and substitute for you when you are really down to nothing. That's been the biggest advantage that they've had, they haven't had to find many subs. They haven't had a sub shortage because of what they've been doing with this.
Is there a problem with their contract doing that, or not?
No, no. It's a good meeting.
And they're not the only one doing that, right? I mean, there's others in the state that are doing that.
They're the only one that I know of, but I'm sure others are doing it. I'm sure they are, yep. I just don't know which schools are.
On that, along with, Chad was saying, but teachers, hiring teachers, are we having a hard time hiring teachers?
We will, because of the teacher shortage. There is a significant drop of enrollment over the past five years from a lot of the colleges with the enrollment programs for teachers. I don't know what areas yet, we don't know exactly what the openings are going to be, but once those retirees go out, we're going to get fewer applicants than we've had in the past, I can guarantee you that.
Is it legal for the district to offer them financial incentive?
Yes.
Is it illegal?
Is it illegal? No, it's not, I'm sorry, I thought.
Is it illegal to, financial incentive?
But you might get in trouble with, that might be a union issue, so.
Especially if you, we want the teachers within our district. To offer them something, I don't know if it's even legal to offer a price of a house or anything like that. Because I know when I am still doing hot inspections, that they favor teachers and police officers and fire personnel, they get a special break if they buy a house in a certain neighborhood.
Right, yeah.
So, I don't know if it's.
It would be maybe outside of the school realm that you would do that. You might have an organization or community organization that has a housing development that may have gone through first homes or some other organization that buys the land. And then, on that land, you build a house, and then that house is reduced at a significant price, where a person that, not just a teacher, but maybe a nurse or somebody else that's in that same salary area would be able to afford a home. That's where I've seen it work successfully, is when you get the community organizations working together.
Well, if there are no further questions, I believe we are at a point where I would entertain a motion to recess into closed session.
Well, that dates to, that dates to remember.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. I'd like to review the following dates to remember. February third, three thirty P M., the Wellness Committee meeting at the district office. February eighth, the Finance Committee meeting at seven thirty A M. at the district office. February eighth at three thirty P M., the Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting at the district office. The February eighth at five thirty P M., the board work session, also at the district office. And our regular board meeting will be back here at the City Hall Chambers on February twenty-second at five thirty P M.
Mr. Chair, just to let you know, I will be out of the pantry on February eighth.
February eighth, all right.
You might be attending the work session.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now, I believe I can entertain a motion to recess into a closed session.
So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say aye. All right, then we are officially recessed into a closed session for purposes of negotiations.